It's not AM on the 31st day of October, we're gonna get started. If you're gonna speak at public comment, if you're gonna do it at number five, citizens to be heard or after either one's fine, please do not turn it into a roundtable discussion. Once we start debating the issue or talking up here with a lot of senators on it, we'll warn you once and that's gonna be it, okay? Let's please not start an argument anyway. Roll call, Commissioner Yauer.
Here.
Commissioner Rosales is going to be out, he had a surgical procedure and is not able to make it this morning. Judge Shaw's here, Mr. Duipnaff.
Here.
Mr. Schindel.
Here.
Please stand and join us in opening prayer and state symbol of the pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all of our blessings. Thank you for the rain received and asking for your blessing. We ask for the safety of our citizens on the highways as they access your current daily visits. And Jesus stand in prayer.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is anybody speaking right now?
Yes. Karen.
Hello. I'm not a citizen, I am an employee of a county and I just wanted to let everybody know, we've only had 58 voters vote so far in our election and that's like less than 1% of our voters, so I just kinda wanted to mention that as a report. And then also that early voting is going on today and anybody who comes, if they haven't voted yet, go vote while they're here, convenient, it's in the office right next door. Please don't forget that ID is required when you vote. And then the other thing I wanted to say is you may have noticed that there's two ladies sitting outside of our office there. What they're doing is because of the voter ID this year, the Texas Department of Public Services, we do not have one here, I contacted the Texas Department of Public Service because they offered to come to counties that didn't have an office for those, and they can issue election ID certificates. So if you've got the proper ID or the proper forms of ID that they need, which is simply a birth certificate, which you can get from the county clerk's office, and two other supporting documents, one of them can be your voter certificate and another can be like your social security card, there's a whole list, they've got the list, then you can get an ID today and still be able to vote in this election because they are offering temporary IDs, taking pictures and those. So I just wanted to give everybody the opportunity to hear that information.
Thank you, here. Mr. Holmes, Allen Holmes.
I'd just like to reference here on items number 24 and 25 about voting for a sound system and amending the budget for that sound system, that you, gentlemen, ladies, do your job, that was cut out of the budget just less, just 31 days ago, and I think we'll be able to prove that, and we've already discussed and talked about getting a simple sound system that can save the county much money.
I am also addressing agenda item 24 and 25 to amend the budget by $24,444 for audio and video systems. Are we trying to break a Guinness Book of World Records by amending the budget already just 30 days after it's been approved? This item was considered at budget time and it was decided that $2,500 to $3,000 would be sufficient for an ample speaker system, not $24,000. How does this qualify as an emergency need to amend the budget? A document, yes, an important document, was misplaced or allegedly taken. It's been replaced, submitted, and reported. End of story, end of the mission. So now the courtroom needs cameras. Correct me if I'm wrong, the district, the county courtrooms have never had cameras. The district courtroom in this new building wasn't designed with cameras either. Is this or this not a temporary courtroom that we are in at this time until the courthouse restoration is complete? Were cameras figured in for that courtroom in the new courthouse? Probably not. No other county judge has needed anything other than one bailiff, another person, a security officer, or cameras. Why now? Think about it. Think about this, putting cameras in this courtroom now will not solve the problem, it will make it more. More pointless open records requests, more accusations. They won't, the cameras won't serve as security but as a control device for the audience, a surveillance system if you want to say, for the next lawsuit. What's next? Light detectors? Please don't fall for this, gentlemen. $24,000 tour.
Linda Cole.
Good morning, I wish to address the same items. I am a citizen, taxpayer, and employee of this county. How dare you ask for a recording audio video system at the cost of $24,444? More, yep, you can look at me. More, more than what the county clerk or county employees get paid in a year. That's pretty sad. That's really sad. The county employees here handle legal documents that also become historical documents, but no, we're gonna pay for a needless item to go into a temporary room when we have a multipurpose room across the hall that is used for district, county, T C J, A D, the name, it goes on and on and on. If you wanna put a sound system in, that's fine, put it in over there in the multipurpose room for all to use. You see that occupancy sign there? 30 people, it's regularly, routinely, knowingly violated. How many people are in here now? We're either bumping 30 or we're over 30. You wanna hold your court, hold it over there. You wanna put a sound system in, put it over there. We do not need the little recording toys to go in here. We have a county clerk that records the record for the commissioners' court for your county court. You have a court reporter, stenographer, or the county clerk to keep the record. There is no need for this. Thank you.
Harvey Shiger.
Staying to the items 30, 31, 32, and 33 on the agenda regarding documents that require to be filed with the county clerk's office and the lost budget. Local government code 11 states clearly, chief budget officer for the county is the county judge, not the auditor for the county clerk, and that she, in this case, is responsible and accountable for that lost county budget. We understand that the chief budget officer, judge, lost the county budget in 2014 or misplaced it. Cover page of the reconstructed budget filed in clerk's office stated that the chief budget officer, judge, was not aware of it being lost until October 12th, some 12 days after it was required to be filed in the clerk's office. It is my understanding that the clerk, county clerk, informed about the location of the budget in the county judge's office on October 1st. It is refreshing to note that the county judge had by this act admitted losing the county budget and has taken a positive step in now providing documents required to be filed in the county clerk's office on the record and in open court. This action is a first since Barbara Shaw was elected of an open and transparent county government. Hopefully, this will be the first continuing effort on the part of the county judge and the commissioners' court. It is hoped to be open with the citizens, taxpayers, other elected and appointed officials of this Barnes County. Thank you.
That's all until the appropriate items are here. The next one is to open still bids for the Barnes County courthouse. Lorraine's running late, so if you guys wanna wait for a while or we can go ahead and open the bid, we can give you the prices if y'all need to go, whatever it must be for y'all, it doesn't matter. Some of you guys have got jobs to get back to, I know you don't want to sit here. So Lorraine's gonna do a tally sheet on those, we're not gonna make the decision today anyway, so if y'all wanna go ahead and open them, we can go ahead and open them till you guys can get to work.
Just for the record, these are on the parking lot, not here's the courthouse. You just said courthouse.
Courthouse, I think the item says courthouse and it's north parking lot.
Correct.
Go through this one, see. What, if you're here at M2 Federal, where did you push your actual bid?
Oh, there it is, okay. Actually, on this parking lot, it was $147,487. And then the next one was received this morning at 8:27 by Presidio Contract. This one is from Royal Construction, it was received this morning at 8:40. This one is from CIS Companies and it was received this morning at 8:47. And then the last one is from HMC, that's gonna be Health Mills. And it's $205,000. Then this one was received this morning at 8:55 AM. That's gonna be a total of five bids that were received on the courthouse, that was all the bids that were received. Yes, courthouse parking lot, excuse me. Now, Lorraine will do a tally sheet and get with you going, or one of us will get with you or something regarding when she does the presentations back to the court, okay? So if y'all have any questions, please feel free to call. Thank you. We're gonna skip Lorraine's other items until she gets here, she ran through the process. Number 12 is gonna be acknowledged on record at the San Antonio Food Bank, will be in Kennedy's, it says School Street, we had to change the location with the city park, so please note that that's gonna be in the city park in Kennedy.
But just for that one, or?
Just for that one. Next item on the agenda is to consider and approve, disapprove proclamation declaring the month of November as official home care and hospice month. I just need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. A 4-0. Next item on the agenda is to submit the ballot for the board of directors for the 2014-2015 year for the appraisal district. We have 1,083 votes and we have five nominees. Historically with us, what we usually do is we have divided them amongst the members, if you have a different way that you'd like to do it, I'm open to that, whatever you want, just tell me what you want in here. Yes.
(Inaudible).
Yeah, I think not, and I can remember. We're done now. Yeah, divided, just divided.
(Inaudible).
Yes. And then that's what I'm saying, see which time do they go, like 2:40? Yeah, 2:40 and then three, 2:40s. What is 2468?
216.
216.
Yeah. 216, 216.6.
Yeah, that's what I have to.
What did you say, what's key, what is it?
Barbara, it's 216 divided by 5 and .6, so you'll have a little bit more than that.
We didn't have a second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Next one on the agenda is to discuss approve/disapprove waiving a permit fee for the right of way of use by Alfa Reclaim Technology on Middleville Road in exchange for agreement to provide type 2 reclaim water to the road bridge at a reduced rate.
Judge, I've invited representatives of Alfa Water to meet you this morning. I've given their proposed contact, Commissioner, I had time to review, but you had a chance to review it.
It's okay.
Okay.
I don't, do I have that contact?
I apologize, I gave her the only copy I had. Do you have that sort of fact?
At least I have the copies.
But it doesn't, I have one right here, two either, which we'll take back with you also.
Let me give a chance, yes ma'am, that's actually just a 210 authorization permit, that's not the...
But I have your proposal also, I gave that.
Yes, correct.
Just to give you a quick background on this, this came to my attention from Commissioner Schindel as a result of his office handling the permit process. The permit request was made to his office and he forwarded to me and I reviewed it, reviewed the documents, and in exchange for waiving the one-time fee to give them a permit to put a water line on Middleville Road, they're offering to provide water and I think it's a legal usage according to the information that I've received. If the court has a question about the rate, I went back and reviewed my invoices and we're paying anywhere from free water from EOG to a dollar a barrel, free cake, so they're offering the water at 35 cents, the majority of our invoices were between 30 cents and 40 cents. So if the court wants to discuss that rate with him, I think whatever we agree on the rate, that it would be a good resource for the county because water becoming more and more scarce.
Yeah, Commissioner, Judge, appreciate the opportunity to be here. Once again, my name is Reagan Stoudt, I'm representative for Alfa Reclaim Technology. It's, I believe, a recurring fee for the permit, it's every quarter, that's why at the reduced rate, we believe, in talking to Ronnie, I don't know what the current rate Shaw is purchasing at, I know there's different sources you're getting it from, but I think it's a fair rate, it's lower than, I mean, our average or typical rate is a 50 cents a barrel. The biggest benefit, I think, for us is, I mean, it's reclaiming wastewater, it's not using your fresh water, so it's giving the community an opportunity to reuse this source instead of using our drinking water. I think it's a win-win for both of us if the court would agree to enter into this agreement with Alfa. It gives the county a source of water other than freshwater at a reduced rate and gives us access to the Middleville Road easily.
You're okay by Mr. McCall?
Reclaim, reclaim water, you have to track the records of the water, don't you? We have to, so we may have to keep that on file.
You have to maintain that it's used for legal purposes, yes. Mainly what it is, is the TCUQ is requiring that if they come to you and say, hey, on this date and time y'all took water, what was it used for? For the county's purposes, all they have to do is say, we had projects in these areas and it was used for soil compact and dust control, your typical purpose.
But we, the county, would have to keep those records?
Yes, sir. I believe those are records that are maintained though currently, there wouldn't be any additional records.
And if you have any leaks on, are they using IPAC or what are you using?
Using PolyPAC, yes, sir.
Do y'all have a leak, can y'all clear it right away?
Correct, yes, sir.
Say the, say the actual contract will be written later?
Oh, we have a contract that's been provided, I believe it's from...
You have a contract, everything's up and going.
I find that's there, can you?
You're saying 35 cents?
Yes.
One and a third.
Well, so we're trying to, we're trying to eat. It's, unfortunately, on the reclaim water, our out cost is pretty high and that's, 50 cents is, we're making about a six to eight cent profit per barrel. If 35 cents, we're really making no profit, but we figure in lieu of the easement, that's realistic for us. Unfortunately, Alfa, I think we're a little ahead of the curve on our idea. It's hard down in the Eagle Ford right now, we're competing with multiple landowners who have obviously agreements written in their leases to provide water for most of the oil companies. We do have some agreements with a few electric companies that are doing building site work for pads and a few of the road construction companies, which will be similar to what the county would be using the water for right now.
Yep, provide like a card and stick in the...
Yes, sir, it's all SCADA system, it's electronic documented 24/7. So get a county at any time, any of the water to be available to pull in there and fill it up.
I'm making a motion to approve item 15 as written.
All in favor? Any opposed? Then motion carries 4-0. Number 16...
Thank you.
Card, can you, one minute, that matters. Number 16, discuss approve/disapprove advancement to operators, $3 per hour increase for Daniel Gilli with the Road and Bridge Department effective retroactive October 1st, 2013. This action will not require a budget amendment. Myself, Commissioner Yauer put that on there. We had a employee that was totally overlooked when it came to budget time, my understanding, his name was not even appearing on the employee list. He did not get a raise, he did not get anything, disappeared. Wait a second, one minute, let me finish, then we'll go. Because Mr. Gilli started calling myself and Commissioner Yauer and then we met with Mr. Mitchell and then Mr. Mitchell wrote us an email, but allegedly this gentleman was out of work for an injury or something and then was overlooked at race time. What do you have on that one?
On the reverse side is the listing that was provided by Ronnie Mitchell when he did the proposed for the road bridge at budget time. The handwritten numbers, again, on the reverse side are his suggested pay rates that were approved by court. If you will look by that particular individual's name, he is listed, his current pay rate was listed with zero dollars increase proposed. He was out on an injury at the time. He did return to work before the budget was adopted. There was no increase proposed before adoption, even though other changes were requested in the department before adoption. The current budget allows for five labor positions at $11.50 per hour, one service maintenance position at $15.50 per hour, one permit officer at $17.09 per hour, plus the cellphone allowance that's rolled into the salary. Two foremen, one is at $16.50 an hour, one is at $17.22, they also receive the additional bump in their salary for cellphone allowance. One sign tech at $13.05 per hour, seven operators at $15.50 to $16.20 per hour, seven drivers at $12.60 to $14.00 per hour. As of today, there are currently open one operator position at $15.50 and three drivers at $14.00. If $3.00 an hour increase is awarded, the budget amendment would be required as the budget for that position is only $15.50. I do not believe that retroactive pay is permissible, it would have to be from here forward, and why do this now? We have a new administrator that's fixing to come in and let him assess the situation and handle it internally within this budget.
I think $3.00 is way more than what they're getting, the rest of them got 2.
No, but that was to move him up to, what happened Tracy? Truthfully, I don't understand where the zero came from, we can't just choose not to give somebody a raise because they're on road which costs. That's...
I understand that, but...
That was provided by your interim road manager.
Should.
But we still can't do it.
But you did. And anyway, if you decide to change his positions and give him an increase, you cannot give him $3.00 an hour, the maximum you could do would be $2.90 without a budget amendment.
Okay. I wouldn't, Dan has been operating, has been operating right, whether it's on trial or what, I don't know, but I know that Dan is an operator, I've had citizens, I've seen Dan after he got played and he was a good operator, so.
It'd have to be a dollar and a half.
So I don't know what the price could be and when he came in here, we didn't know the exact amount, we put this on, said he did probably $3.00, about that, so. Therefore, I'm gonna make a motion to advance, Dan, give it to operators paid, but since he is working...
And a $1.50?
And whatever operators pay would be.
Yeah, $1.60.
We have this, she has $2.90 here.
It's $15.50 per hour for an operator, is what's in the budget, so he would be getting a $2.90 increase.
That'd give him $15.50.
Changing positions.
And that'll be within the budget, not requiring a budget amendment, right, going, but it cannot be retroactive.
And Mr. McCall was in on that conversation with us, he agreed that it'd be a good idea to somehow rectify and pacify the situation before it goes any further. So I second Mr. Yauer's motion of moving Dan to an operator of $2.90 per hour. All in favor?
$2.90 increase.
$2.90 increase per hour, can't give $3.00, it'll be $2.90. So we'll amend that to say $2.90 per hour. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries 4-0.
The gentleman out there who bought a dump truck at the last auction, he needs his paperwork filled out. I think it's gonna do the judge.
Well, then he needs to get it.
The item that has been pulled at this time, has already been approved by the commissioners in the past, the contract and the agreement, supposedly has to make some minor adjustments to it, those adjustments have been made, and both I agree to the contract at this time that is best, that contract.
that is best, I'm sorry, that contract, how far you use it, kind of yourself.
Is this going to be, do y'all plan to increase the size of it and everything?
I don't believe there's any plans to do a lot of improvements, other than to maintain it, to keep it up.
Does that make sense? Do y'all have a document?
Yes.
I am on tour.
Michelle, thank you.
And her, will this be, I mean, will this be, it'll be tied in with the state's plan for animal control?
I want to change this maybe, I think it reflected in October, ten days. If it's not identified, I can change it.
The fifteenth, you want to change to thirty?
As I say, since y'all are passing it today, it may affect it today.
Well, the, the actual contract was approved in July, meeting, we're working that data, we're doing it this day.
You want the thirty-first on here, don't you?
I'm just saying, the license has an October thirteenth date.
I put the thirty-first on here, okay?
That's right.
You just need a motion.
I make a motion to approve item seventeen as written.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries for zero. Number eighteen, discuss approve, disapprove, equipment need for zero point thirty-three of an acre, more or less being part of outline block five in the city of Karnes City, Jose Antonio Villalove, A-180, Parks County, Texas, and be more particularly described in that certain warranty deed with vendor's lien date May fourth, nineteen ninety-nine, from Casa Cheryl, individual, executive, and executive, and the state of Vinnie Ray, Vinnie Boyd, Cheryl, deceased, and his custody of Vinnie Boyd, Shell Trustee, Emil Gallegos, record, and volume seven twenty-nine, page five seventy-five, with official records. That's Joe Wright. He's a landite. I'll show y'all what that is. I didn't make y'all a copy, because I'm not going to. No, probably some of them. It's just a motion. See what I'm saying?
I make a motion to approve item eighteen. I'll say it.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries for zero. The next item on the agenda is to consider, consideration action on authorizing the county attorney to explore the possibility to recover damages caused by the dumping of debris in the Karnes County Rogerside Elementary located at the precinct three, county yard property, Karnes ISD, with Siskel and Corlina Incorporated regarding the old elementary gym in accordance with the plans and specifications prepared by Berchem Environmental Services. Go ahead, Mr. Hancock.
The only thing that I'm requesting of the court at this time is you give me permission to explore what the facts, the preliminary facts are, and what our possible remedies are, and then I'll come back to you as a body and give you a report, as to whether or not we need to hire outside counsel, whether or not we have a chance of recovery, what the conditions and what the facts are. I don't have any idea what they are at this time. All I've got is just a lot of allegations. That's all I'm asking for at this time.
I have some stuff on the roads that I can test one. Y'all on the court already, so y'all?
We weren't.
We weren't.
No, that's right.
People either.
No, that's right.
So, I'm just wanting the court had to know that they dumped stuff there.
No.
On the other road?
Oh, on that one? I guess, but I think the concern is, in that contract, that Siskel and Corlina contract, I gave y'all all the copy. Some, Siskel and Corlina was paid to haul off that debris. What happened to that money?
I think, like, well, it must have, but it shouldn't have gone to us.
The taxpayer shouldn't have to pay to have it hauled off by Siskel and Corlina, and then pay to have it hauled off again.
I'm just wondering, you know, if somebody in the county at the time gave them permission to put it, as it is, it's like, you know, it's tough, isn't it? I mean, that's what I'm asking.
He needs to explore. That's what, yeah.
I don't have any question, any answers for your question.
All right.
But I'll be glad to get what I can for you, if given, y'all.
Do you need to give them any motion on that?
Yes.
I'm going to, we allow county attorney to explore the God of Nineties, this is...
I'll say it.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries for zero. Number twenty is going to be consideration and action on the possibility of recovering the damages and costs for cleanup of walk crossing bridge, category three twenty-six, with Karnes Hospital degree, which occurred in May, in May of two thousand thirteen. The, we also had to refer those expenses. There was going to be another contract where somebody was paid to haul that off and dump it, and for some reason, it ended up in the San Antonio River, which is not a proper dumping facility.
I'm going to, we go ahead and allow county attorney to attempt to cover it, and walk across the bridge.
Now, now, remember, my request is to look into it before I do anything legally. I'm going to come back to the commissioner's court and tell you what I found as far as the facts are concerned, and then you can go from there. If you want us to proceed, we will. If you don't want us to proceed, we won't.
Okay, then I'll, I'll make a motion of the county attorney, explore, explore the possibility, number twenty is written.
I'll say it.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries for zero.
Judge, may I comment on that thing and tell us before we better go?
Yes.
Well, inspect the both of the sites. Both of them have been cleaned up, very nice, that's been a really nice job, and I would invite all members of the court, go by, look at it. My employees were photographing both sites, and I had to give it to the paper, and I hope they give it as much attention for being clean as they did for being done. Thank you.
Good luck. All right, Mr. Hancock. Number twenty-one, consideration and action on the status of the mineral interest agreement between the trustee of Karnes City and Karnes County on the new jail site.
Again, the same request, that I be allowed to look into the issue of mineral interest and report back to the court as to what should or should not be done as far as legal action is concerned on this jail site.
I know that when we talked to Mr. Pittman, we agreed to take the site with all the minerals and the tax sale, and that's agreement that he made with him. And I understand he's come back, and we don't have all the evidence. We can, to, to, to talk about it, clean it up, and everything, so I make a motion to give Mr. Hancock, county attorney, the authorities, to investigate that situation.
All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries for zero. Number twenty-two is consideration and action on the status and clarification of the employees' budget for the county attorney's office. Mr. Hancock?
All right, we jumped twenty-three. Were we going to address that one?
We're on twenty-two, hurry.
Twenty-two? Okay. Okay. My request is that the position of temporary full-time administrative assistant, the title be changed to temporary or part-time administrative assistant, reduce the number of hours from forty to twenty-six, in order that those additional hours be freed up to pay retirement on that position, is my request.
Would that require any more funds or any more money?
No. It's, the, the number of hours is being reduced sufficient to pay any retirement that might be associated with that position.
So, you're just changing it from a temporary full-time to a part-time?
Yes.
No temporary consideration at all?
That's correct. To where we can pay retirement benefits.
I make a motion to approve number twenty-two as written, Mr. Hancock, and reduce the hours to forty to twenty-six. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries for zero.
Just for a side on that, I was not afforded that suggestion, so I'm not sure that that will fund the retirement, if you had put that caveat on there, that if it will fund at that time.
If it doesn't, let's allow Herb and LaWanna to work it out to where it will meet the same budgetary criteria. Why don't we do it that way?
Okay.
No problem.
Is that okay? Y'all both agree to that?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we don't have to bring it back here, y'all will fix it together. So, can we include that in the motion, Carol?
Yes.
All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries for zero. Number twenty-three is consideration and action of an order authorizing the county judge and/or Sylvia Cortez to contact the phone company for phone connections and computer upgrades requiring signatures from Sylvia, and any other county or elected official requesting any of the services on the work order. Herb? I will do it for you, but Sylvia will.
My request is that we designate somebody with the responsibility of contacting the phone company to get our computer system up to date, getting the internet up to date. We've been talking about this since January. Today, I called the county auditor's office and asked when we were going to get a line to do the upgrades on the computer, and they told me it'd be several days. The problem is, all of our downloads are running at about a third of the speed that they need to be. Every time we call out jail, it's costing us two hours additional time. The auditor's office is busy as, as they can be, and they just don't have time to deal with this kind of stuff.
We have been dealing with it, Herb.
Yeah, but so far, it hasn't been done. And that is my request. I, we, it's kind of like this, shoot up a mortgage. We need some relief, and we ain't getting it. Got this coming and asking specifically, will you hook the doggone thing up? And we're just not having any success. So, as a result of that, this is the only thing that's left, is to get somebody else to do it. It's not the best process, but it's the only one that I know of at this time, and that's the reason for my request. It's straightforward. It's not anything to do with the water. It just has to do with the burden that they've got, and they've got so much to do that they can't take care of.
Carol, is this the same money you loaned your money to do long time ago?
And we've been in discussion with AT&amp;T and with Jeff on U-verse and doing another MIS router. The discussions continue. In fact, Jeff and I probably had seven, eight emails between us, between five o'clock and nine o'clock this morning. It needs to stay in our office, because we have the contacts with AT&amp;T to get the government rates, to make sure we are exempt from the taxes. When other people start ordering services, those specialties are not implemented, and then we have to go and chase trying to get the refunds back. That's where this utility refund company is doing all these refunds right now. We've received over twelve hundred dollars worth of refunds because of mis-billings, not utilizing our governmental contracts. This is in the works. I'm hoping within the next two weeks, if that long, that we will either have an MIS router here or a U-verse line to hopefully assist with this situation. Further down on the agenda, we'll be addressing the server.
The, the computer speed is, if you put it on a scale of ten, we are at three, and we have been there since January, and our download time is just absolutely ridiculous, and nobody will, you know, we ask for help, and folks start dodging, and somebody's got to take responsibility for this. LaWanna has been doing it in the past, but she has got her boat loaded, and somebody else needs to take it over. She is the auditor and the manager, and you are the manager of this county, and that is the basis on which I'm making this request. I understand where she's coming from and what she's saying, but she is the auditor, and she can make sure that everything we do is appropriate, but I cannot get anything done the way it's doing, and we just not get any help. Your country, we can't get that gum stuff downloaded for the county attorney's office. They won't fool with it, because we're so slow, we can't even get on board. So, it's not any, it's not anymore a laughing or joking matter. It is a matter of taxpayer money is being spent on things that don't mount to hill of beans, and we need to get this done. We ain't got it done, and we need to get somebody that will get it done. That's my request. It's straightforward. So, I know where I'm coming from. I've talked to all of them in that office. I ask you to look at it and make a decision on what we should do about this kind of thing in the future.
I make a motion to approve number twenty-three as written.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries for zero. Next item on the agenda is discuss approve, disapprove installation of an audio video system in the commissioner's court by law, the amount of twenty-four thousand four hundred and forty dollars to her. Herb, do you want to let the comments go first, and then you go?
Yes.
You've got a couple of votes left. How many do you have left, Carol?
Three. Bobby Rutter? With regard to the time of twenty-four twenty-five, it has been brought to this court attention on numerous occasions that amendments to the budget have to meet strict criteria. Today, I have not found any situations where this court has approved emergency items in accordance with the statute. The statute requires grave public assistance or an unforeseen circumstance which was not discovered at the time of investigation. That is definitely not the case here. This situation with regard to them, audiovisual, as it's referred to, was addressed during budget, and I'm going to ask LaWanna, which I haven't had the chance to do, whether or not she has believed that this is in strict enforcement with the law.
No, ma'am. Only four thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars is included in the current budget for an audio system.
Okay. Well, if, if LaWanna is under the attention of non-strict compliance with the law, then she has a duty to enforce non-payment of any expenditure that she believes is not within strict compliance with the law. So, I would say that LaWanna, you have the responsibility under law, section one eleven one open, Government Code, refers to the emergency, and I know y'all have heard that a number of times, but it doesn't seem to have any bearing, so I thought I'd repeat it once more. The fact that each of y'all has a responsibility to comply with the law, and we had over sixty-five amendments to the last budget, which was over a million dollars in addition to crimes expended, and that's something that y'all need to take into consideration when y'all start doing this. And we don't need an emergency. We need a, 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 a system which allows everyone in the room clearly hear what's going on. That's important. The citizens need that, and we, and the citizens would request that, but I think that was budgeted in the, in the last budget, so we don't need the twenty-four thousand, and we don't have the, legally, we don't qualify for a budget amendment on that one.
I also signed up to speak on that item. On September twenty-seventh, during a budget workshop, you all motioned second and invoked unanimously to remove from the budget the audio video system, leaving only enough to purchase audio equipment for the commissioner's courtroom. Today, you have on the agenda to discuss approve, disapprove, twenty-four thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars for an audio video system for this very room. I said before and still agree that there should be microphones in here, as opposed as I sit at the table, I still have trouble hearing you all at times. But three, video cameras for this room for the cost of twenty-four thousand dollars. Is this really for the public to have live access to the meetings, or is this just another version of the gacha game that has been played against almost every elected and appointed official for the last three years? The proposal from the surveillance company is nothing more than Big Brother surveillance on the citizens and county employees that have a right to attend this public meeting. If the intent is to screen these meetings to the public, then twenty-five hundred dollars is more than sufficient for that purpose. A webcam on a computer, a video camera set up on a tripod, both options that will suffice if the true intent is to provide access to the public. But twenty-four thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars is extreme. Have any of you called around locally to see if there is someone available here in the county that can do this? Have any of you called any other company anywhere to compare prices? Again, that is more than most of the clerks make in a year. It's an expense... It's an expense that is irresponsible and unnecessary and an insult to the taxpayers. You are asking for a budget amendment for this expense because you have deemed it a priority. Yet for two years, my office, where all of the records of Carntons County are located, has been left unprotected by any kind of fire alarm system. $24,000 and not one mention of the district courtroom where convicted felons are brought in for hearings, where defendants accused of crimes ranging up to capital murder are arraigned and possibly tried. There is no surveillance for that courtroom. But here you are asking for $24,000 to play I spy. For what purpose? What benefit is this to the county and to the citizens? How many more times are you all going to approve spending taxpayer money on whims and woks? Yes, a document went missing. There isn't any need to point fingers at anyone or another. A new one was reproduced, signed, and filed. Let's move on. If the system is to try and catch the next time that someone errors, then one can only suppose that you have nothing better to do with your time. Too much time has already been spent by one trying to find others doing something wrong. And keep this in mind, there are worse things happening within our county government than a document being lost or someone speaking their opinion. We are not Washington, DC, or even Austin, Texas. To suggest that this room and the happenings in it warrant this much surveillance is absurd. Commissioners, please make the right choice for the right reasons. We just heard Mr. Hancock say taxpayer money is being spent on things that don't amount to a hill of beans.
Bye.
Well, keep mine short and sweet. Ditto to everything that everybody said. I think surveillance equipment in this room is past ridiculous. It's absurd. We have other things that we need to be spending our money on the road. A lot of people here live on the county road, and would much rather see that money go toward the county road than to sit there for someone to go back and listen to later and say, "Oh, that's what she said about me? Oh, that's what he said about me?" Because that's what it is. You people just want to hear what we're saying about you sitting back here. We're public elected officials. I was the mayor of Falls City for 10 years, and Don can attest to this. I grew some really big shoulders and some really thick skin because I didn't make everybody happy. You guys aren't making everybody happy, but that's part of your job. It comes with the territory. There are a lot of good things you guys have found involved, but we should listen to people when they're talking instead of talking to the other commissioners because that's part of the problem. You're too busy talking amongst yourselves and not listening to what your citizens are saying. It's ridiculous. Find the money to spend somewhere else by getting decent raises. You gave an operator $2.90 raise, and you gave my club $0.50. That's an insult.
It sounded like I stirred up a horn, Mrs. M.
Yes, sir, you did. Next, I want us to discuss approve-disapprove installation of an audio/video system in Commissioner's Court by Bob Bailey in the amount of $24,440.
This request is precipitated by the fact that we lost the document, the important document for the county, and we can't find it. There's no evidence as to where the credible evidence is to where the document went. It's important that we record everything that occurs in this meeting, in the front and the back, as far as what goes on in this courtroom and what influences county government. This courtroom does not have cameras in it because defendants are presumed to be innocent. Courts have a responsibility to defend and see that fairness takes place, and the jurors make decisions on the cases. It is not a place for the public, the public decision-making process. What goes on in this courtroom is of interest to every citizen of this community. The front and the back of this courtroom, what's said in here by all of us, what I say and what anybody else says, is subject to the scrutiny of the citizens of this community. It should be put on webcam, as I think Carol had suggested, so everyone can see it. The people that run this county are you guys, but the people who support this county are the people who go to work every day at eight o'clock in the morning, and they stop and come home in the afternoon after 12, 15 hours. They don't have the opportunity to come up here and view what's taking place here. This should be put on a webcam. It should be published 10 minutes or so before the meeting starts until the meeting is over. All of it, front to back, what I say and what you say should be broadcast to the community to where they can make a decision as to what takes place. The precipitation of the request on this is based upon the fact that the document was lost. We don't have any evidence as to where it went, and we need to take that kind of fact of situation for the future. That's the reason for my request.
Mr. Hancock, don't you think we could be able to find something a little bit cheaper than $24,444?
You know what, Tracy? When we were at South Texas Judges and Commissioners Training, the ladies that were there that were setting up the booth, I found one for like $100,000 and one for $98,000. And then I called Mr. some of our fellow judges to see how they do it because they all put them on webcam, and to be able to find one that will then come in here and they'll audio/video it, and you can watch it in the meantime is not cheap.
I think there's another alternative. I don't know that this is...
It's a little expensive, huh?
It is expensive.
It's expensive.
What, Carol?
There is a local man here who probably could do it for less than $2,500. It would be video cameras, and it would be streamed onto the internet for people to watch. I have his name at the office. I'll get it. But nobody has even called anyone else. You've gone with one company for $24,000, and it's a surveillance. This is like you're thinking everyone in here is a criminal.
No, no, no. You know what? No, no, no. This was gotten from Niva. We put those in in the other building.
For surveillance.
For surveillance.
But it runs lifetime. It's called surveillance. It's in everyone's company. He's not going to change it as people change. He's been in the business for 20 seconds. So how does this qualify as emergency? Unforeseen?
It's not unforeseen either because we discussed it during the budget process.
And documents are lost every day in every office. People are human.
That's not true.
That is true.
People are human.
She said that law and justice authority to be unforeseen, and it's unforeseen, but that's not true.
There's a legal definition to that.
That's enough, Ms. Yard.
So we need a motion. I make a motion we disapprove item 24.
Thank you, Tracy.
All in favor? What? We didn't hear...
He made a motion to disapprove. I think Shelby seconded it.
Three ayes.
Three ayes.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna go against that. Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you, Tracy. Shelby.
If you can find one cheaper than that, I might...
You have almost $5,000 in that mic.
Carol, do you have somebody that can actually come in here and install video cameras? Give us their name.
I'm happy to do that.
Number 25 is to discuss approve amending the budget. We're not going to have to do that, but I mean, I sometimes wonder how come nobody in here wants the truth to come out. Number 26...
Really?
Go ahead, Mr. Yard.
Really?
Number 26 is consideration in action on the status of clarification of the following EMS budget line item, and that's going to use intermediates to read. It had a dash in there, and that's Mr. Kelly's item. Come on in, Mr. Kelly. It said emergency medical technicians or intermediate?
Yes, basically, Lawanna and I looked at that, and I just, we both agreed, and we just wanted to change to read emergency medical technicians, dash, basics, or intermediates. Like I say, I inherited my budget, and I spoke with Danny about this before, and it's too high for our full-time, our three full-time employees, and they can either be EMT basics or EMT intermediates. And we just wanted to clarify it, just so there's no questions.
So you just want the clarification made that it's either-or? It's in the spectrum?
Yes. It's in the spectrum.
Judge, it just makes it easier on payroll-wise, whatever. If he says, "Tell if it's a basic or an intermediate," you know which line item.
That's fine.
And they also have different pay rates.
I'll say it.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Number 27 is consideration in action approving the following ambulance to be placed as surplus. It's a Ford 350. It's one ambulance. It's a Type IV 350. The year is 1997 with the VIN number 1FPL847F8BEC92161 with a mileage of 170,270 miles. And that's Dennis. It says 170,270.
I can figure it was close to $300,000.
Well, that's what comes up on the old document.
Are you using that one? You're not using that one?
No. No, it's not even on our books with the state as a certified ambulance.
We approve number 27. I'll say it.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Number 28 is discuss approve disapprove acquisition of server for 210 was counted replaced. We approved at 23 at estimated cost of $5,200. Current cost estimate $6,000 plus installation estimate $2,500 to $4,000. Proposed installation will occur on weekend, and access to all offices will be necessary. Monies to fund this acquisition will be from two-line item, and that's Lawanna.
Originally, I came before court and requested the authority to replace the server on August 23rd at an approximate cost of $5,200. That was approved. The server was never ordered and/or installed in last budget year. Therefore, the cost has increased. It will be approximately $6,000 for the actual server plus installation of $2,500 to $4,000, depending on how smooth the installation goes because there will be two technicians doing it. There are two line items where this can be funded up to a total of $10,000. I just want approval that this can be ordered and expensed as I listed.
Well, what did you order for the last budget year and this time?
I have no earthly idea.
Who's supposed to order?
Jeff Rames is who the quote came from.
Okay, so if he was, he got the quote, and who was approved to order it? Who was supposed to order? And who was supposed to get it, submit the order?
Well, my thought would be if you provide the quote, you do the ordering. And Jeff was notified that it was approved to do it, but it did not happen, and now we need to replace the server because it is an antiquated dinosaur.
So this is like a bomb material.
Okay, if we approve this, you're gonna push him and make him get it put in?
We all will, in this building.
And this server will increase the speed, hopefully, help it?
We have to do something because we're printing pictures, and it takes us a day to print pictures.
It has nothing to do with the internet.
I make a motion to approve item 28.
It has nothing to do with the internet.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Number 29 is presentation of an up-to-date Road and Bridge inventory report, Bonnie. It's not that big a book, is it?
Yes, because of the volume of this material, I've been requested by the auditor's office for a copy, and we've made this on disk, the complete volume, and also the head doc. And this accompanies the one that the court will receive. This is as accurate and complete up-to-date inventory of the equipment in Road and Bridge, and obviously because of the volume, I didn't make each one as an individual one, but this is here for the court for the record and a CD.
You can add to your...
Ronnie, thank you for giving...
Appreciate it.
Bonnie, we appreciate it.
You're quite welcome. And while I'm here, I just want to give you these. These are what would be next, our next report. I gave you a recap on the bond road on 145. We're now working 295. It's not a complete, but I have a recap through the material that was used up through yesterday.
Freedom of giving.
Huh? Oh, I heard you.
Any... Not many questions.
Don, I appreciate your hard work.
You've done everything you did.
But I do have a comment about something. I'm thoroughly concerned that we have had to hire a new road administrator who I have yet to see show up in court to review anything or even pretty much go visit the Road and Bridge. It leaves me concerned where his heart is. I may just comment.
Number 30 is acknowledgement on record of Carntons County Commissioner's Court filing of A1A 101 stipulated subcontract by HMC, A1A 201 general obligations contract, certificate to insurance from HMC, performance and payments bonds, and there's also the certificate of liability that we receive. Those need to go to Carol. They need to be filed by the court. The next one is the original payment bond. The notice to proceed is one of those... It should be attached to one of those. It's right behind this Ford Nasser. Here it is. So we made a copy right here. That's number 32. And then number 33 is the acknowledgement on record of the Commissioner's Court filing. This is the federal tax certificate for the bonds. Remember, it says $7,750,000. We talked about that. It's not going to say anything in there, but you guys know why. That was discussed by Mr. Henderson and then when they were here. For the record, those have been filed with the court. And please also know, in time we file records with the court, the court has to file them, not me. And the next item on the agenda is to discuss, examine, and approve the Treasury's report. I want to apologize for not getting this to you.
Excuse me, Judge. May I ask that the commissioners all vote on those? 31, 32, 33, did you all vote on those?
You know what? Mr. Hancock, I'm going to ask you this because, like I said, it's not my job to file it. It's the court. Section 111 of the Government of the Government Code says the court shall, not the judge shall, not sure. Do you want us to vote on filing them?
Yes.
So should we vote on that those have been filed, items 31, 32, and 33?
Are you kidding me?
Okay, we need a motion if they've been filed. 31, first.
I have to do them separately.
Do them separately. 31.
30.
31. Is it 30?
30.
Go to 30.
Acknowledgement of the record, number 30, of the county.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. 31, that's the acknowledgement of the record of the Commissioner's Court of the original payment bond. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Number 32, acknowledgement of the notice to proceed and the courtroom project.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Number 33, acknowledgement on record of Carntons County Commissioner's Court filing a federal tax certificate for Carntons County Texas General Obligation Bond Series 2013 with County Clerk Number 4.
I'll say it.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Can you explain what just happened? When you say not that those were filed, but when you say court, not you, because it says the court shall. When we file documents with the Commissioner's Court, unless it's...
God bless you.
The Commissioner's Court's job to file the documents. So all, probably all need to walk it over their turn. No, they're usually filing with the Commissioner's Court. I've never heard it been done. I haven't run the end.
Number 12 is an acknowledgement, I saw you said that on that.
That's the food bank. It'll be at the city park. I don't think so. That is not really filing anything there.
So we vote...
It's Hancock. On, oh, no, it's not you. It's me. It's you. Or you're nice. Again, I want to apologize for not getting this to you earlier yesterday afternoon late. I walked into Lawanna's office in that corner. I had a naggy feeling. Should've been doing something. Should've been doing something. Should've been doing something. And I realized I... And I realized I had done my report because I guess I'm kind of not used to the last business made to have it. If you go in there on page... on the budgeting accounting module report. On, uh... sorry. Page one, the pretrial diversion funds. I had to handwrite in there. That was my fault. I've not received it in until after the first of October. So we just carried it all the way through to the end of the report. That's why it's handwritten.
You just take the piece there the way you know that?
Well, it's my machine. I know. I did it because I was in a hurry. I did it through the machine. Shelby, I don't know if you got it on time or not. Okay. My question.
Is this the...
Yes.
Is this the original that says BS on it?
The original that says BS on it is yours. It's dangerous. Can I have a little?
Everybody's got a copy. We call it the same one.
Yes. No, that's just for Carroll. I always, uh... email Shelby his...
Page one, you said where?
Where it says pretrial diversion, it says zero. It should be actually twenty thousand four seventy-three.
You see?
Yes, sir. Anyway, I just carried it forward all the way through. That's just to carry it forward. Add that to one thousand four seventy-three that wasn't included. Got that because your copy may not have done that. Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Just a couple of notes. I'm trying to get an investment committee meeting in two weeks, not next week, but in the following week. The biometric screening and the evidence airlock lineup for employees, we want to add that coverage will be December tenth. We're going with a new company this year, so they kept pushing us off, pushing us off. So usually we do it like now, by now we've had it done. Though we noticed on that. And the bills today, we're playing for the time clock plus. I already have John Jeff Ramesh on standby. He's gonna install that. And the somic wall, we started the bid for the contract for the... I'm sorry, the depository bid for the bank. We have to do online banking. My office building does not have enough protection on bills, so we're adding a somic wall on that. But as soon as we get that time clock plus going, we will have training. Please allow, please allow, employees' time to come and do it. We have two one-hour trainings that are paid for. So at two different times, it's just an hour, that people will be able to come in and watch a video on how it's done. Also, I'm still waiting to see when the contract with the bank, if we agree we need to get that done on the clause four bid because basically we have a bid that we just filled in on other contracts. And I'm done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris.
My question, we do have a contract because we've accepted it.
It's a bid.
Right. We've accepted it.
But there's contract that still has to be signed.
I gave it to Mr. Hancock.
Why so I gave it to him?
Oh, I did too.
Okay. After I told you that we needed a contract. That's just a bid form. And if you accepted a bid, it's like accepting the bid for the painting. We still have to have a contract.
That used to be on one of the computers. I don't think it is anymore, so we're gonna have to...
Well, I gave him my copy. And that came from...
Your blank?
No. It's a four or five page document.
No, I'm saying where the blank's blanked.
No, because it's my contract from last year. That came probably from the attorney's office.
Uh...
Now I'm done. Thank you.
As I mentioned, on the actual report of monies in the system for short, the pretrial diversion funds, you'll go to page eight of the budgetary accounting system. I did put it in there and carried the totals down. So total receipts for the month were two million, nine hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents. And the total closing balances through the system is twenty-five million, four hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and nine dollars and thirty-one cents. The next page is our debt requirements for fiscal year thirteen. You will notice everything was paid and on time. The next page is items of interest. Total county funds available as of September thirtieth, twenty-five million, three hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-five cents. Total county funds invested as of September thirtieth, eighteen million, two thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and nineteen cents. Total non-invested funds, seven million, three hundred and twenty-three dollars... two hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty-six cents. I do want to mention that yesterday, additional wires and investments were made with All City National Bank. Sales tax received in September two thousand and thirteen, seven hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. Sales tax received in September two thousand and twelve, seven hundred and seventy-three thousand, thirty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents, a decrease of sixty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars and seventy-seven cents. Sales tax budgeted for fiscal year two thirteen, twenty thirteen, which was last year, five million, three hundred and eighty-five thousand. The actual sales tax received during fiscal year twenty thirteen, nine million, nine hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and twelve cents. So the collections were above the budget by four million, six hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and twelve cents. That's approximately eighty-five point forty-five percent above budget. Sales tax received this month, September twenty thirteen, six hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-six cents. You notice we're gradually decreasing. That's another sixty-four thousand, almost sixty-five thousand dollars from September twenty thirteen.
Back line, people moved out. All your trailer blocks are getting empty.
Right. And hotels are showing vacancies.
Then crank back up again.
Lauren, let's get back to you. I see you.
Did we pay bills?
No, we're not paying bills yet. We're all...
Okay.
Oh, hurry. You have a script of authentic integrating services to the bidding phase and fifty thousand dollars for the eighteen ninth for the courthouse restoration phase one, the new roof project.
So what this is, this is Graham Lee Loon, who has been your architect on your foundation repairs. The Texas Historical Commission, the amount of funds available for the next funding period have been reduced significantly. And so the really only opportunity that we foresee for Karnes County to get any additional monies in this next funding period from Texas Historical Commission is possibly for emergency use. And the roof could fall under that. So in order to try to get some emergency monies to deal with the rest of your roof on your existing courthouse, documents would need to be prepared by your architect and submitted to the Texas Historical Commission, you know, requesting those funds, similar to what you did for your foundation. Whether you will get them or not, of course, is going to depend on how many people submit and how they look at your need versus other needs. But it certainly has been already discussed with the staff at Texas Historical Commission, and it does deem to be a viable opportunity to maybe get some money in this funding period.
In other words, you want to try to get money out of the historical people out of the state of Texas?
We'd like to try to get some money in this funding period. Otherwise...
If you do, you're pretty good.
Yeah. We are trying, but the only opportunity really is going to be for emergency. Phase two is not going to happen until, you know, the legislature...
Right.
Yeah. Budgets more money for the Historical Commission. So in order to get those emergency funds, though, documents will have to be prepared and submitted. And Graham Loon has given a fee proposal to go through the bidding phase for those documents of fifty thousand dollars.
We have discussed this in meeting with Mark Allen, who's there. This would be the only chance we have to do anything in an emergency situation. The roof is the next law. And we approved in a budget, did put in a budget fifty thousand dollars. It's in it.
Is that just the roof or is that the turret or the collateral?
The roof would include the turrets around the outside aids of the tower. It would not include the top tower and make preparations for all the towers, the space up there for it. It wouldn't have, not necessarily, let's see what they can introduce. And then we'll get the roof done, so we only have any more. There are a few links left in it. I go through that terrain, inspect it, and I find a few spots where it rips. We did spend the eight thousand dollars in phase one to repair those turrets with a short-term fix. They're not long-term fix on the turrets right now. So I see this as the next step. I'm glad you mentioned it.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. The next one is to approve the TSI Laboratories Construction Materials Testing of Crack Monitoring Services Proposal for Karnes County Engineers. Karnes County Courthouse Phase One, a project where not to exceed be a twenty-three A. And Gary Continius, right?
Yes, ma'am. And what this is for is the... there are crack monitors that were put in place some time ago that have been read previously prior to doing the foundation repairs. And there's still three of those in place as well as additional crack monitors that we're suggesting that be placed on the courthouse to be able to monitor movement within the building. The foundation repairs routing injection has been completed, and for a one-year period, they'll be monitoring from the outside. There's little nails all the way around the building, and the surveyor comes out and reads those. But inside your building, you also have cracks that have opened up since, you know, in this past four to six months. And what we would like to do is have those read and updated from the previous reading as well as install about four to six more crack monitors that are strategically located with Mr. Loon, your architect, and TSI Laboratories and read once a month so that we are able to monitor what's happening inside the building and the interior walls at the same time. So TSI Laboratories is already doing your construction materials testing, and so the cost is minimal for them to go ahead and do the readings when they're coming out on a regular basis anyway, doing the testing.
Okay, do we have any of these crack monitors outside?
Mr. Loon is going to, is going to locate them. We may put one or two on the west side where that crack has opened up, especially the one over the door, but Mr. Loon is going to locate the exact locations.
We're gonna have to have...
I'm making a motion to approve. I'll automate this.
Will you allow to execute?
I'll allow. You to execute.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. We want them to read the existing one, the addition one. There's three originals. Oh, yeah, we did. So, yes.
So we have to do today. I'm sorry, I should have pulled you back. I'll fill the screen. I gave you two. I gave you one original. Is that all you need?
I'm fine with one because I can take a copy and you have your original to be filed, and we'll send the original back to them. Number nine is to approve EMS Phase One documents and budget authorize architect to prepare and issue bidding documents. I don't have time for that.
That I'm bringing. Yeah, these are the larger ones, so we...
Okay.
So what we have done is prepare a document that shows what is phase one and proposed phase two together to be able to look through this. And they would be separated when we bid, of course, but just to limit the amount of paper that we had to print, et cetera, and to make it easier to show you how phase one and phase two work together, we've included them all in one set for you to look at. So the first page that you're looking at right there is a, is our title page along with a rendering of what the outside could look like on Main Street. And if you go on to the second page, we'll look at the site plan that is prepared, was prepared by the civil engineer, showing how we can lay this building out, the phase one and the phase two. So Main Street is at the top of your page, and then Seventh Street is on the right-hand side of your page to before any plan north.
I have this copy. Yeah, I brought mine. If you see this talk, you can... Okay. Questions, I don't think.
And I did meet with, I've met with Mr. Kelly twice, I believe, on this to, as the transition went through, to make sure that we were, he was in agreement with the approach that we had been taking. So the concept was when the problem started with EMS is to put a trailer up on the site for temporary living quarters and then build a metal building. And originally, my thoughts were just, you know, just a metal building, no plumbing, no anything, just get a metal building there that the ambulances could be housed in temporarily, bare bones, and then build your, you know, build your EMS building. So what we did is we located the metal building close to the trailer, which is closest to Seventh Street, and away from Roden Bridge. And then we located it also so that face, what we're calling phase two, which would be the EMS building, living quarters, and the ambulance base that we were putting in phase two, to be closest to Roden Bridge, but still leave space to allow Roden Bridge to stay until such time we find land and you're able to move Roden Bridge. And then we can demolish the existing building and move into our new building. So phase one is the metal building along with some parking out front next to the trailer. And then phase two would go all the way over to just the side of your existing building. The site plan shows parking as well as the future parking, and it shows dashed in fencing to be able to keep Roden Bridge separated from EMS as well as keep the public from wandering around behind the ambulance building and wandering around into the trailer area. It's the same kind of fencing that you already have. It's not a real secure fencing. It's not there to really keep people out per se that really want to get in, but it's to discourage and define the limits of the property. So that's what your site plan shows. The next page is just our typical notes and symbols that we have.
What's the estimated cost of this whole project?
That's... can I go through the plans first and then I have the budget prepared for you to go over that with you? So the... I'll go over.
It's a little bit elaborate, I think. Go ahead.
Okay. The composite plan, which is your A one point zero zero, shows what is the phase one and the phase two. So phase one is your metal building, and then phase two was going to be your living area as well as your future ambulance base and the covered base that we had talked about for covered washdown area, et cetera. The... That pretty much shows our, the layout that we had. And this... The, uh, yeah, that pretty much shows our, the layout that we had, and this really is, it's the same floor plan that we had presented back in, in July, and it just has more detail on it. The next page just shows how the two buildings would be separated out, Phase One would be bid first, and Phase Two would be bid afterward. Now, the difference between July, when we presented, and now, is as we were developing the Phase One documents, it was discussed that this ambulance building may be used for longer than just a very, very temporary period of time, and we may need to go ahead and make it with the larger doors, and put a bathroom in, and go ahead and run plumbing to it, so that it can be used longer than, my thoughts were just very, very short-term. Okay, so, we have added, if you look at the Phase One building, we've added a janitor closet and a toilet room, just a single one, but a single toilet and a single janitor closet, and we went ahead and added the storage that you will need for your, to secure your supplies in a locked room. And then Mr. Kelly asked for a ten-by-ten storage, we have in the top corner, in order to store your records, because right now you don't have a place to put all of your records, and, so we have that in there also. And then we went ahead and put the larger doors on the ambulance bays in order to have them be more permanent. With that being said, your Phase One building has now really turned into your ambulance base that we had figured in Phase Two, because, you know, we're not doing just the cheap throw of a metal building temporarily anymore, it really will accommodate Phase Two. So, as we talk through the budget, my thoughts are, is to, you know, modify Phase Two to take off the ambulance base that we had scheduled for Phase Two, and you can build, you're really building your ambulance bays as part of Phase One, and then when you're ready, you can go ahead and build your housing, living quarters, as part of Phase Two. The next page on here is, is just the reference plan. The first, the page I was showing you earlier is your dimension plan, this is your reference plan, and then we have our door and window schedules. The exterior elevations are the A2 sheet. Essentially, we're just doing metal building, and then in order to give it a little bit of curb appeal, we put some rock on the front of the building that would be on Main Street. The rest of it is just a plain metal building. And then on the front, the very front porch, or, excuse me, the front door, we have a small porch that we put on to help with shade and, and the weather. So, again, if we look at what our Phase One and Phase Two is, Phase One is shown separated from Phase Two, and if the court decided to go ahead and have Phase One be your true ambulance building, the, I would suggest that the bays come off on the other side. If you ever did need another bay, you could add another bay on that side if you need a third ambulance, but the two bays that you have should suffice for quite a long time. Your next page is just your, your elevate, your sections going through, so like, for example, your, to save money, your admin area doesn't have to be as tall of an e-pipe, so in the middle here, we have your admin building lower. Originally, I was thinking that that first phase ambulance temporary building would also have a lower e-pipe, that's where it was discussed, we may have this a lot longer than we're thinking, so we need to go ahead and raise it up and have it be more of a permanent.
Yes, permanent. Ain't no such building under being a U.S. rep.
Well, yes, sir, but I was thinking we would use, you would finish it out, it could be, there was talk about emergency, emergency operating center, or a meeting room, et cetera, instead of being the ambulance base. Your next page are your wall sections and just your partition types and toilet room types, et cetera. Your roof plan shows just a single bridge down the middle, which will allow you to expand onto either end, and again, just a simple metal building is, is the concept. Following page is your redundant ceiling plan. So, again, instead of on the Phase One, where we were just going to be one big open area, you now have some ceilings and walls in there with a toilet room and janitor closet and storages. And then in the admin area, we have lay-in ceiling where we can because of the cost savings, and then jipboard ceilings in the bedrooms, et cetera. And then the, the rest of the sheets are your, your details, and then your structural drawings and details. Okay, so, cost.
Is this, are we gonna vote on number one? We never.
Can I, um, well, you really can't vote on, on the other one until I tell you what the costs are.
Can you update this at the bottom? Our, our first person is the control.
Yes, they did not, uh-huh, they should have changed that.
They didn't, they didn't.
Yes.
They certainly will, thank you.
Okay, um, yeah, I need to review the cost with you first, so that you can, so that you can, in order for you to be able to vote on, on the item. Um, well, I just have it to, to present. So, the, in July, what we had presented was a potential budget for construction cost of 1.8 million, and those were broken down into the different phases. One, there was a Phase One, a Phase Two, and then what we call the finish-out phase to take that original metal building and turn it into a meeting room, or whatever the court had decided that they wanted that Phase One building to be converted into. So, for Phase One and Phase Two combined, we were at 1.7 million for those two buildings, not counting the money that we had in there for finish-out. In July, we were estimating the Phase One building to be in the $200,000 range, and Phase Two to be about 1.5 million. Again, we had shifted, we had no plumbing, we had, we were gonna have Roden Bridge, was just gonna roughly create driveway, we had, we did not have site cost in there, we just really had pretty much a metal building and lights, as bare bones as we could get it. So, what happened as we created Phase One into being more of a permanent ambulance-type base, some of the cost from Phase Two shifted over to Phase One. We put the plumbing line in for Phase One, the water line, the sewer line, our site cost, our paving, et cetera, new driveway entrance in front of the ambulance bays, and those items shifted over. So, in our budget now, where we have our October budget, we're calling it, we're still at the combined cost of 1.7 million, but what's happened is, the Phase One building is at 490,000, that includes a 10 percent contingency, and your Phase Two building is at 1.2 million. So, about $300,000 shifted over from the Phase Two over to the Phase One. Now, we also upped these numbers from July based on, you know, the courthouse and the jail both coming in higher than anticipated with the market down here. And we actually had a contractor put together pricing based on the drawings that they saw from us, based on where we are today in this market. So, it's as accurate as we feel like we can possibly be with construction cost right now where you are. With that being said, you know, we have some different options. We can pare down Phase One and get it closer to where we were before. I had $50,000 in the, in the budget for Phase One site, 106 for the metal building without any interior walls, we had 20,000 in there for electrical, and then 75,000 is your general conditions and your contractors', you know, cost, overhead and profit. And that's at 250,000, where before we thought we'd be closer to 200,000, but the costs are coming in higher down here, there's no doubt. Or we can go ahead and, and bid this Phase One out, and see where it comes in, anticipating a cost of up to $500,000 on it, and say, this is going to be your ambulance base, and that's what it's designed for, and all you have to do is add on housing when you decide you're gonna vacate the trailer.
Yeah, that's why we're gonna.
Which, which I think, I mean, that makes the most sense, especially with where costs are right now, on what it's costing to build, et cetera. And if you think you're gonna be in this temporary building longer than, you know, a very temporary time, I feel like that's the best use of the county's money, is to bid it out as an ambulance building, knowing that you can add on your housing at a future date. It's, it's set up that way on the site, it's designed so that you can easily add on, and, and maybe the numbers will come in a little bit lower, but I don't want to come here and present to you a lower number when the contractors are telling me this is where they think it's gonna be, and just hoping that we're gonna get lower. You have the courthouse going on, you'll have maybe the courthouse parking lot, and then you have the jail also, so there's going to be some economies of scale. The guys that are already out there mobilized will want to bid on this project, and they may help, you know, help our numbers up, but, um, that's where I think we are going to be, based on what the contractors are telling me at this time.
So, you're looking at, you're at $50,000 on the budget right now?
No, ma'am, it's, it's 490, 250 is where we thought we'd be in July. It, it took the numbers of bare bones metal building and updated them to today's numbers would be about $250,000. But if you're gonna build an ambulance building that's taller, with the bays that can really work for future ambulances, with the storage and the bathrooms and the janitor closets, we're estimating you're gonna be about $490,000 is where I think Phase One will be. The advantage of that is, it will be designed for your future ambulance base.
That's Phase One by itself.
That's Phase One by itself, this man. But then what will happen is, Phase Two's gonna come down significantly, because the Phase One ambulance base, we're gonna just take those off, is what I would recommend, and use your Phase, you know, your ambulance base that you're building now will be built permanent, versus what we were thinking was just slap up a metal building as fast as we can, super temporary.
No, it's not gonna be temporary.
Right.
But it needs to be cheap, too.
I, I mean, if you look at the plan, on that site plan, we have a bathroom, we have a janitor closet, we have a few storage rooms, um.
Well, we don't need all that, I don't think, I think we need restroom in there, and if they need to store something, they can store something over in the corner. We don't, if we need a bit.
No, the record's gonna be locked up.
Well, I try.
The wreckage, and you got some supplies that you had to keep still, as you can. I know what you're saying, but.
It's gotta be locked up.
I live in a tight. Drugs. I've been schooled a little bit.
So, on number nine, to have the Phase One documents?
Number nine is, yes, the Phase One documents, which would allow us to bid out Phase One.
Well, so we're gonna just throw it out for bidding?
We can put it out for bidding, and we can see where it comes in, and, and, you know, you have the right at that time, we can try the value engineer, we can find out who the low contractor is, and see if they have ideas to save money, um.
Well, I tell you right now, I agree with what, this little extra wing's got, it's got to go, it can't fit. To me, we can do two things, we can reduce the, this other piece that you have before the other, other wing, this piece here, we can reduce this almost to half, if you have to, or in later future, we can maybe prove, provide housing in the back of here somewhere.
Yeah, and this is, I mean, this is all Phase Two, and when you look at your, look at the rendering, of course, this is all Phase Two also, this is your Phase One, so.
I can see Phase One, but I can't see all of this, 'cause what's gonna happen is that we need eventually to partner with Corn City, so we could put a unit over here whenever they build their fire station, or wherever, you know, and it's just gonna be a station, it'll be a primary station, but then whenever we can start dividing between the, you know, partnering with the cities, it'll just be a, a facility, just a house thing. Jess, what do you think?
Well, you know, cost aside, you know, Phase One has got, in some way, shape, form, or fashion, has got to go by. I'm, I'm every day faced with the fact, is this building gonna fall down on equipment or crews, or, uh, you know, and, and as far as the storage, you know, if you're, you're not, if you're not securing things, then, you know, lots keep on, the people on us. I mean, you know, that doesn't help me in the long run, when I'm trying to upgrade equipment and buy new stuff, well, where'd the last stuff go? And we, and we will eventually have, have drugs that are gonna have to be locked up, and, and medical records, I, I'm doing everything I can right now to keep medical records secure, because there was no way, shape, form, or fashion beforehand to ever secure those, and, and, you know, Phase One, I, I am in agreement with Shelby, that, you know, if, in the future we do need to expand, you don't need to put all your eggs in one basket when it comes to EMS, because that, that doesn't up your response times, or your, or, or spread your people out where they're needed around in the county, but as far as Phase One goes, um, you know, we, we have to do something in some, some way.
So, we need to put it out for bidding?
We need to put it out for bidding, is that what you're saying?
I'll, I'll remind the court that the current budget has $200,000 in it.
Yes, ma'am. I understand that.
Do you have any money from last year's budget that's carried over?
No, you.
It goes into unencumbered funds.
That's why it like sounds so bad, when all that money goes back to unencumbered funds. I mean, if we have a really upper budget every year, we'd be like running on the river, and we'd have all that money towards, I mean, yeah, so. But anyway, we have to go off for bid, so that we're gonna do is to prepare bidding documents for Phase One and for Nine.
Yes, ma'am, that's what we would like to do, is bid.
Well, that's one way we'll see where we're at.
Exactly, to see where we are. See what people show up with.
But it needs to be, you need to make the sign of the very minimum, whatever that man needs back there, very minimum.
Well, and we can take, I mean, we can take.
So, we can get the minimum bid.
We can take the rock off and the porch off, and just, I mean, you'll just have a door, though, if it's raining or whatever, you're not gonna be protected while you're unlocking the door, um.
Well, it doesn't rain that much around here.
Still, still, though, Tracy, when those guys are walking in or those awnings, and they're carrying stuff, it's coming out of those ambulances, that expensive equipment, training that stuff out. That stuff needs protection. Yeah, but that stuff needs.
I know, all of this doesn't take much, it doesn't seem like it takes much, but these are the numbers, I mean, we did, we put it out to the contractors to say, 'cause I told them, I'm not gonna go before the court and tell them how much it's gonna be unless I have some real numbers behind me after, you know, where the market's coming in. I would have never put those numbers on this building if they had not given me, you know, pass the money to me.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Well, wait, we're not gonna save, we're not gonna say 50,000, our taking the rock and porch off. Only they can be cut down any in size, we could say, but we're not gonna save anything, it's gonna be updated.
Yeah, it's good, ma'am.
So, all we need to do now is approve Phase One, that's sort of where I, the proof for bidding, this man.
Okay.
I'll make the motion. To approve out of Nine, it's written.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Number 10 is to approve EMS Phase Two design development documents and budget authorize architecture care construction documents.
So, that item is on there, just to, so you can direct me on what do you want to do on Phase Two? How soon are you gonna move forward with it? Do you want to continue on with the design so that you have instruction documents ready for bidding at the time that you are ready to move forward? We took it through design development, because that's what the court had, you know, voted the last time, and we just need some direction on where do we go with it from here.
And Phase One is inclusion of the?
Just, is your ambulance building with one bathroom, a janitor closet, some storage inside, and, and that's pretty much it?
We'll put Phase Two on hold.
Well, I'm gonna get Phase Two.
I don't think we need to spend any more time to get Phase One.
Let's get Phase One first, so let's pass on Number 10, it's gonna get Phase One.
That's fine, we'll just.
No action on that. No action, Number 10. Number 11, Lauren, you need to deposit cost and budget recap, courthouse, jail, EMS.
So, Roden Bridge, we have not, you know, we're, we're still waiting to get land on Roden Bridge, so the things have not changed on Roden Bridge as far as spending any money. So far, expense to date, I show $11,985.
Do you want to pay?
Yes. So, it's pretty much just, we, we did the, we did the preliminary design, the original site visits, and we, we did the asbestos testing, and, and that's it. So, it's at the same place it was, you know, as it was last time. EMS, we, um, what's that one now? The EMS project, previously, we had presented the 1.8 billion, that will be modified now based on the, on the presentation of the court for just Phase One. Your, the survey's been done, there was a budget amount approved by the court of up to $6,500 for the geotech and the survey, those actually, actually came in at $3,500, actual amount to date. actual amount to date. Um, the AE fee, um, based on the previously approved budget is in there, based, and then 33,000 has been billed to date. The trailer, um, what ended up being, third, well, we had $38,405 budgeted, um, the final cost of the trailer was $38,158, um, then we have your AE reimbursable expenses at $1,900, and so I show expense to date $76,795, um, on the EMS project.
And that looks good up there. It's kind of, it's kind of a lot, but...
It's just, well, they, they got power finally, so your AC use, I think, should've come yesterday?
Today.
Today, okay.
These movements?
Yes.
Our, our people will be really excited when they have this thing in eyes, on the playful back...
I heard they're moving in their trucks, and, yeah, so it's... Okay, so then now your, um, jail project, now that we have, um, we've bid it out, the contractor had his notice to proceed, and of course, we did groundbreaking, and they started demolition, I understand, we'll go in by, um, later on today to see how far they got on their demolition. Your construction cost, um, contract is 9.8 million, this includes your allowances for furnishings and fixtures, landscape, and your contingency, as well as your dispatch power. The site demolition prior to bidding is still at 10,000, that won't be changing. Um, the environmental cleanup that we've done so far is budgeted at 213,000, we spent $82,000 on that to get the entire site remediated, except the part just north of our parking lot that we're still working on. Um, your, your AE fees, it's, uh, budgeted and expense to date, um, insurance, additional AE insurance, budgeted and expense to date, as well as reimbursables, your civil engineering budget is in the expense to date. Um, geotech and survey, again, those won't change, those are done, budgeted and expense to date, and then we still, on the left-hand side, we're still showing a project contingency, vomit issuance cost, and your construction materials testing budgeted. Um, of course, construction materials testing, nothing's been expensed to date yet because we haven't started construction, but that number you'll start to see change as we go. Here, Jess, excuse me. And then for, um, Phase One, project costs for the Phase One A, I'm, I'm still, we didn't quite finish merging, um, I had to create a different format for Phase One A just because the uniqueness of that project with the things that were going on, with how much was expense from, or how much was funded from THC, what you do with your bond funds, and all the different, I guess, had unique categories, and so we didn't quite finish getting those merged together. But on your Phase One, um, there should not be any other expenses other than if Mr. Fisher has a final con, a final invoice, which he hasn't invoiced anything, um, since, let's see, since March of 2013. Um, there may be a cost there for your, what, what the THC requires in the final closeout of the project, they require a report, and so I'm just waiting to hear back from Mr. Fisher on, on that final report and any costs associated with it. But right now, what I show is the county's, in addition to the matching funds, the county expended funds at the bottom there of $155,812 that was, um, came out of bond funds, and so the new chart that I'm working on will add that to your, what you're expending out of your Phase One A project, and so you should have a total recap of how much of those county bond funds have been, um, expensed for your courthouse foundation repairs. Uh, on a positive note, you still have, um, between 70 and 80,000 dollars in your, um, construction contingency on your courthouse foundation repairs, and we've uncovered just about everything that hopefully to be uncovered, that dug down and exposed, uh, a lot of pre-existing conditions, so hopefully we'll be, um, we'll still be able to maintain everything within that construction contingency.
Lauren, did you give a copy of those to Carol or to Luana?
To Luana.
Well, I'd really, those copies go to Carol, so people can get them and look at them, that way they're, when...
Okay.
It's hard for me to recap the costs and make sure she's right if I don't have copies.
I'll start bringing another copy.
I'm gonna post them on the website, I'll...
We'll email you a copy.
Everybody wants to know which of those projects are costing, what's going on, and I'll just post every single one of them on the website.
And I can send you the Excel spreadsheet if that's where, you know, on your end, so that way you'll have that.
That way, those people can go into minutes and view exactly what's on that agenda, and then we'll just put these on the website, and people can pull up each project phase and see what's being spent, what it's being spent on. Is that all yours?
That should be it. Rock, basically.
Thirty-six?
Last thirty-six, more than that bill.
What?
Another book?
Yeah, this is one of my James, like, are James in there? I tried to call him, but he...
No, I get James here. I think James is...
Right there.
He picked his up early, and Roden Bridge called and alerted us to pull a bill, so that's why I just didn't do it. Just to advise you, at 10:08, I emailed James to authorize order of several based on your action. On page one, the first section is courthouse restoration Phase One A expenses, $305,922.61.
And I want a clarification, if it's EFY 13, that's last year, and it's not as...
It's not against this year's budget, it would be journal entry back.
Okay, but it is not, more just...
Correct. And that's why some of them are handwritten in there, because the description line wasn't long enough to pick it up. If you go to page four, under capital outlay, the first bill being paid is the Ford Nissan for legal services reviewing the contracts on the EMS housing, the trailer house that was purchased, $4,131.53. Also under that line is the expense of Hart Enterprises, $216,249.90, that's the balance on the election equipment. Also under that category is the time clock plus expenditure of $13,312.70.
Wow, what is the time clock any different than what we're gonna write?
It is going to computer generate the time, clock-in time and exit time for each employee, so therefore, the treasurer's office will not have to double-check all the additions and subtractions that are on time sheets that continually have problems with them.
In other words, you don't have to go look to try to balance them out, if you're on that table?
Well, I will still have to do spot checks on them, yes. It should be, it's reliable. Everything is subject to human error now. We go to page 10, on Roden Bridge expenditures, about midway down is payment to listed construction company for $38,070, that is for the debris removal at the intersection of County Road 344 and 345, which was previously discussed, item 19 on the agenda. That's the debris from the elementary school that Herb is going to research to see if there's any legal avenues we can recoup our expenses.
I think a question from Luana, you were here. What, was there effort, was there ever law before the court to allow that to be done on here? I know the law was crossing bridge, but...
Well, the Roger E. sides ones may have been mentioned in court, I don't think authority was requested, I think it may have just been mentioned, but that's where it's gonna go.
Oh, thanks for pointing out.
The total funds in this bill cycle being expended are $795,551.74. To complete the item that was removed on Roden Bridge was the software for their sign machine, they just unpacked her box this morning and it was not included in there.
Capital outlay was $890,000, what, he was at the jail?
Not the big one.
Was it paid to?
No, okay, three. There's a payable to, so I can find it.
It's a manual, you know, so...
That is under courthouse maintenance, not capital outlay.
Well, where did it go? You're not in the courthouse.
No, but we have generalized plumbing repairs out of courthouse maintenance line item.
How long will it be?
I would imagine it's in the jail, I would have to look at the actual bill to see. But that's not just the water heater, the description also says clean pipes of debris, and I'm sure the description is longer than that. I know we did have a bill to, kind of, those plumbing.
Did we have the Roden Bridge other side of the stand that's rescued?
Yes, we did.
All in favor?
Who made the motion?
You guys, y'all?